Good, how are you?
Yeah. Yeah. No worries.
One and two. I'm sure we're gonna get on forty minutes.
Uh huh.
Do you think that...
What's up, bro? I can't see there.
Dude.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, no, it's no doubt.
I know.
Okay. Does your report just...
It was...
I can ask you which bond item, which item of number eleven?
Okay.
See. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna take another week.
They were just...
You know, we just need to go ahead and... They're not here.
Yeah, and that's what happens is how did, how did the...
And there's, you know, we're not in the habit of putting a change in policy. On the standard, you know?
Right, right.
Going things. Sure, like today, everybody will know on Facebook that there was a policy change.
I do know, I'm sure we do. I hope we do. Oh, come on. That's good.
Yes, sir.
We just went camping this past weekend, went to the river.
Are we gonna do that after you? After you recognize my aunts, uncles, cousins?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Man's a good time.
While we're walking?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's fun. We had a house we used to rent on the, that was on the freeo. And she decided she didn't live there full-time, so now we can't go there anymore. To that house, per se.
Mm-hmm.
Senate subdivision in there.
Yeah.
There's a Texas stole in the front, but...
Mm-hmm.
It is warm in here. Seven or eight bedrooms in there?
Nice, yeah.
About you. And it's just, you're so good.
Uh huh.
He just wanted to have a comment. He said he told him he could do ten.
Yeah, it's eleven. We'll tell him eleven.
Yep. Hey, good, how are you? Good.
Excellent agenda. So it's gonna be eleven B.
Now, Brian, do you have any caps on the bond?
Both have them.
You won't have caps on the bond this year, believe me. Does he have one younger than the senior?
Senior.
Not his son was senior the past year. Oh, he's gonna have a lot of caps on the bond.
He can recognize stage and do everything first.
Our kids are so good. Everything all is...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are you ready? Are we ready? Five thirty-three.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order at five thirty-three, and we are beginning tonight with recognition of Dave Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we want to recognize Mr. Campbell. One of the things that a lot of people do not understand about board members is that it is a very thankless position to hold. I know some of... Yes, sorry, Mr. Seidenberger. So, there are a group of individuals that have been board members throughout the nation, and they understand. They understand the hard work. They understand the vision that must be set. They understand the confidential conversations that must be had. They understand that sometimes there are moments where politics come into play. There are some times where issues across the globe impact and influence decisions. It's repeatedly, non-stop. It's a very thankless position. Today, we want to honor Mr. Campbell because he did it twice. The very first time, Mr. Campbell served the people, the community of FISD, and during a time of need, we asked Mr. Campbell to serve once again. And there was not a pause when he said yes. He came forward and he said, "Absolutely, I will serve again." He knew the time period. He knew what some of the concerns were nationally, across the state, throughout the community, and he was committed to come and do his part, once again, to serve the students and the community of FISD. So tonight, we are here to recognize Mr. Campbell for all the work that he has done, not only the past few months here in the boardroom, but the past few months outside of the boardroom, because the work is not only here, it's outside. It impacts your family time, it impacts your personal time, it impacts your time twenty-four seven. So, I want to acknowledge, or publicly acknowledge, Mr. Campbell, and thank Mr. Campbell for the work that he's done the past few months, and just recognize him. Mr. Campbell?
When I called Dave, when we had this opening, he did not hesitate to say yes. And I was so grateful that he was eager, he wanted to meet everyone right away, and that's the kind of leader that he is. And I've been lucky to serve with him twice, and I thank you so much, Dave, for stepping up.
Well, I need to thank you all, because it's been a pleasure working with you all. Many of you, again, this is a wonderful school district, great superintendent, a lot of issues, but everybody works so well together. It's just fun.
So, one of the things I love about Dave is he's really good at keeping us in our lane and reminding us what governance is, and reminding us to think about all kids, not just the very top, not just the middle, but also the bottom. He asks the tough questions, and I missed your perspective, and it was a pleasure having you back again. So, thank you. Thank you for helping the Rocket System. Thank you for helping us get the foundation up and going. I know you served on the foundation, and so I know you helped us pass this bond and attended a lot of the bond meetings, answered a lot of bond questions, and so we're indebted and very grateful for all you've done. Thank you, Dave.
Dave, we appreciate you. Appreciate your service, you're a true servant leader at heart. I learned, I got to know you over the last couple of years, several years, but, you know, you've been sort of a mentor to watch, so we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Dave, your commitment to the kids, the community, I wish the whole community would pay attention to what you've done. It'd make our community a better place. Appreciate what you do.
Early on in the process, Dave was on since, I came on in two thousand and ten, and somewhere around two thousand and twelve, Dave kept hounding me about doing Leadership Tasby. And about every year, Dave, and then Lori, would kind of hound me a little bit, and finally I took the bite. But it, I really appreciate Dave's mentorship over the years. He has a very strong commitment to this community with education between this, the Education Foundation, as well as Hill Country University Center. And so, he's definitely a servant in education, is at the front end of that. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I'll pile on. I would just echo everything everybody else said, but what I will say is I know you like to travel. Don't go far, in case we have to call you back.
Thank you, Dave. That's good. We also need to thank Mrs. Campbell, because she allowed it. For those of you who don't know, I think after the last time, Dave, the first time he retired from the board, I think he rode across the country on his bicycle. And so, I guess this time, you have to, you know, go north and south, from top of Canada to southern Mexico. Yeah.
Thanks so much. It's wonderful. I really appreciate everything.
Thank you. Come back and visit anytime. Okay, we will have an invocation by Mark.
I invite you to join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for this district and those who serve relentlessly, and thank you for our staff, our families, and our students. And we ask that you'll give them a peaceful break this summer. Keep our actions in mind and help us to make the proper decisions moving forward. Thank you for giving us this chance. And Lord, be with our school, be with the students and the citizens of Uvalde as they continue to struggle and recover. Thank you for all the support that they've received across the country, but really be in their hearts, and we have pain for them. Thank you for this day, and these things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, and Judge, if you'll lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And Brian, if you would read the vision and shared beliefs?
Vision. Fredericksburg ISD students are inspired to be successful and innovative in a diverse and changing world. Fredericksburg ISD Board and Superintendent Goals. Goal one, the FISD aspires to ensure that the five-year strategic, the five-year strategic plan is executed with fidelity. Goal two, FISD will achieve academic excellence by continuously improving and delivering high-quality rigorous instructions, so all students will graduate college, military, and career-ready. Goal three, FISD will maintain financial excellence and maximize district resources. Goal four, FISD will develop and implement a successful bond strategy in partnership with the community, parents, and schools.
Thank you. Moving into public comments, our first public comment is Tom Marshall. And he is talking about eleven B. And you will have three minutes, Tom.
Dr. Rodriguez, you said this is a thankful job, so let me do something about that. Thank you for what you've done so far on this council and all the other board members, especially in regard to the books that are in our libraries. Thank you very much for that position that you're taking. As far as the update on the bond issue, I do believe that there are some issues, or parts of the construction that's going to be going on concerning security of our schools. With the recent events in Uvalde, I hope that kind of has taken a forefront and really getting some scrutiny. I'd like to share something that happened to me a long time ago when I was a teenager. I raised homing pigeons and raised them, got a lot of enjoyment out of them, built a pigeon coop for them, which I thought was secure. One night, a possum came in, killed five of my birds. I realized that I was responsible for those five pigeons because I had taken away their ability to fly and evade predators. I hope that we're not putting our kids in a pigeon coop and removing the people's ability to defend themselves the way that they should. Five pigeons is one thing. Losing even one child to a predator is very serious. I would hate for any of y'all to have to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next is Mary Lee Marshall.
My comments are also about the school bond funding. I would like to ask that the school board consider setting aside some money for armed protection for the precious life inside. Contrary to popular opinion, guns did not cause the death of anyone in Uvalde. A criminal who had a gun shot those people. Why did he have the guns? He had no job. He could not afford to buy those guns. Someone else bought them for him. They were expensive weapons. Someone knew what he wanted to do, and they bought the weapons for him because they knew that he would use them to shoot people. This was somebody that wanted to stir up more hate for the Second Amendment. He did a really good job. He knew how to do this. The kid that shot those people had no parental guidance, but he had no doubt been told when he did go to school that the world would cater to his needs, and he was not responsible for his actions. There were laws that would have prevented him from getting rifles, but they were not These were laws that our legislature took time to write and pass. They chose to ignore it. Everybody knew that he was a troubled person, and they did nothing. The sign on the school grounds saying that it was a gun-free zone is advertising unprotected people. What do you think a criminal is going to do? You think they're going to take their guns to a place that is protected by guns? If you really want to protect precious life, then protect them. Allow the people who know how and want to do this to do it. If you don't want to protect them, then don't waste our time.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Okay, moving to district reports, starting with the FHS Engineering Program update from Mr. Mathis.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name's Andrew Mathis. I'm the engineering instructor at the high school. I've been teaching at the high school since two thousand and three, and had the good fortune. As an engineer, I was looking to eventually end up in engineering, teaching that, and giving kids an opportunity to see if that's what they wanted to pursue. I had to wait a long time for Mr. Williams to retire, but upon his retirement, I was able to take over the engineering program, and I just want to share with you an update for this year. I've got eighty-five individual students. I'll read these numbers, the last ones I'll read to you. Hundred and sixteen course enrollments, so the seniors are actually taking two courses with me. There are about another fifteen students that are taking a secondary optional CAD course. That CAD work enables them to provide manufacturing, mill-spec detailed drawings to machine shops, which is, the machine shops, Mr. Campbell, have given feedback that the material they're getting from my students has improved every year. They're not, they used to come with very rudimentary drawings, and they would have to spend a lot of time with the students figuring them out. At this point, students can drop drawings, and they know exactly what they're doing. Flexible scheduling, so I have seven periods to teach within. I've got those CAD students sprinkled throughout the day. I had three students in a secondary research and development class where they're doing independent research like they would as a post-doc. So, those kids are sprinkled into my other classes, so I've kind of got to balance that as well. This year, thankfully, freshmen, COVID is over. Not officially, but the world is returning to normal. A big part of the freshman class is getting them to industry and research so that they can see what their opportunities are in the future. So, this is our students ad hoc. They did that on their own, kind of doing their version of the monkeys, walking around the campus. This is the University of Texas. We also went to Firefly Aerospace, which is a relatively new company. It's younger than ten years old. It's in Cedar Park, and they have a test facility north of Cedar Park. So, the students were really excited to get to see that. That was the first time ever that we got to do that. This is at the Structural Engineering Lab at University of Texas. Here, most of their work is contract through Department of Texas, Department of Transportation. They have PhD students doing research on how to make structural members for mostly highway stronger, how to prevent or reinforce old structure that's starting to show its age. It's one of the largest research facilities in the country for structural engineering. This is for geophysical engineering. This truck has traveled around the world. They take this vehicle to places around the world, and they basically simulate the vibration of an earthquake to see how the soils and whatnot move, so that they can help prevent structural failure of buildings before that happens. And they can also do aft post-incident research as well to see how the grounds are, if they're stabilized, or if they're going to continue to deteriorate. I had about twelve kids in Skills USA drafting competition. Nine of them went to district. Mr. Carson Otmerz and Ms. Carolina Osterberg went on to state. My junior teams, they were extremely slow this year, which happens, but that's part of learning deadlines. But one of the things that they were successful, they continued as a team the whole time. I was kind of thinking some of them might fall off a little bit and let other people do their work, but as a team, both their deadlines for the rocket and their paperwork were all completed on time, which is a huge challenge that not all classes make, so I was really proud of them for that. They tested out at, in Stonewall in May, and this is one of the vehicles taking off. It's in a slow motion, but there's really not much more of it to see because it goes into the sunlight, and you can't see anything, so you're not missing much if you can play that one. I mean, it's, it's very brief. It's in slow-mo. So, like I said, even if they were able to follow it better, which is really difficult to do with the cameras, there wasn't a whole lot to see after that. Both teams did recover their vehicles. One of them collected data, one of them did not recover their data because of the impact. From their data, their objective was to try and break the speed of sound, so traveling beyond seven hundred and forty miles per hour. They didn't quite reach that, but that's part of the process, is getting back. They actually learn more when they don't reach their goal, because they have to stop and think, why did that happen? What could I have done differently? How would I, how would I do this next year as a senior to improve my design? This is, actually, I don't know if you can mute it. Well, you can just play it. It's kind of... So, that is our test stand, which is out by the practice fields. We thought when we started the year, they were really close to going to be able to begin testing, but as the seniors have learned, if something's going to go wrong, it will, and the things you didn't expect to go wrong are also going to go wrong. So, they ended up getting the test stand ready in March, and we ended up doing our first test at the beginning of May, which I think, it was a nighttime burn, yeah? Or is that the second one? So, we were able to get two tests in. The data looked really good. We saw a pattern from previous tests, which is one of the things I kind of told my freshmen this year, is that they, this might be the first time they've ever done math where it had an application beyond the grocery store and the area of a football field and so forth. And it was one of the things I didn't get to recognize until I actually went to college. So, that's sort of my goal, is that kids get to actually apply and do engineering, so that they know if that's what they want to pursue. Some will stick with it, and some won't, and that's okay, but they've had an opportunity to do that before they go off to college. This, I was gonna let, I have two seniors here today to give you guys an update, so I'll let them come up and give an update on the senior progress and their perspective.
Hello, everyone. My name is Luke Kepa. I'm sure many of you know my mom. She's right over here. So, let me pull up my notes. So, I've been lucky that I've known that I've wanted to be an engineer my whole life, you know, going throughout school. I just got like the notes that you, you give your teachers whenever you're in like kindergarten or first grade, then you graduate, and they give it all back to you. And it was from kindergarten, and it said, "I want to be an engineer." An engineer is spelled I-N-J-E-R. So, I got pretty close. So, kind of what Mr. Mathis said, going over like the, I guess, the progress of it through freshman year, you start off and you're kind of thrown into this thing, and you're learning all these different fields of engineering, and you know, you do presentations, you go on field trips, you do research reports over different colleges. And that's very helpful, because right now, I'm not having a hard time presenting in front of people, because I know my material, and I've presented in front of, you know, people before. So, that's, freshman year really helps with that. Sophomore year is when COVID hit for me, so I didn't get to do all sophomore year. It's a lot of like CAD drawings, which is computer-aided design, and we take those to like the manufacturers to help them make our parts, or you know, weld our rockets like in the picture right there. The junior year, we launch at Stonewall, and that's like the big thing, but there's also a like secondary class with that, where we're doing LabVIEW programming. And the LabVIEW is actually the, that's the program that we use to record the data at the test stand, which we've spent a lot of time at this year, because the LabVIEW constantly is not working. So, and then senior level, it's kind of, that's the big one. That's what it's all been built up to do. We go to White Sands Missile Range in New Mexico. Right now, we are, we have a rocket designed to break fifty thousand feet in altitude, which is a little under ten miles, and that picture of it there, it is going to be over twenty-two feet long from tip to tail whenever we have a nose cone on it. I guess some updates for the rocket. We finished our second pressure test last Friday, which we have to pressure test two times at twelve hundred PSI to be able to fly, because I guess if you don't have that twelve hundred PSI, you can't fly. I don't know, that's the rules. We originally had eighth-inch tubing on our agent, we had eighth-inch tubing on an eight-inch diameter body tube, but on previous pressure tests, we had an end cap blow off three different times, which at eight hundred PSI on an eight-inch tube, that's like sixty thousand pounds of force, and it's violent. So, we were having problems with local welder shops, so we took a trip down to Lake Jackson, which is southeast of Houston, and, which is where Brazosport, who's another group that's building these rockets, had their stuff welded, and our take heads blew off again. So, we came back here, and we snatched a quarter-inch wall from them, and we got our successful, our successful pressure test. What else? We are eight days out from supposedly supposed to have a completed rocket. We still need to do pressure tests on our fully assembled like valve system and stuff, and we have to pressure test our injector, which Hunter and I worked on the injector together, and we're having to figure that out. This rocket, like Mr. Mathis said, if something can go wrong, it will. And we, on our original calendar, we said we'd have a finished rocket by the end of April, and at the end of April, we didn't have half of our parts. So, that was a kind of a shock, I guess, but, you know, I just, I want to say thank y'all for having this program. I'm going to UT next year, and I'm going to be studying aerospace engineering, and I don't think I would have near as much experience in this...
front of people because I know my material and I've presented in front of, you know, people before. So that's freshman year really helps with that. Sophomore year is when COVID hit for me, so I didn't get to do all sophomore year. It's a lot of like CAD drawings, which is computer-aided design, and we take those to like the manufacturers to help them make our parts or, you know, weld our rockets like in the picture right there. The junior year, we launch at Stonewall, and that's like the big thing, but there's also a like secondary class with that where we're doing LabVIEW programming. And the LabVIEW is actually the, that's the program that we use to record the data at the test stand, which we've spent a lot of time at this year because the LabVIEW constantly is not working. So, and then senior level, it's kind of, that's the big one. That's what it's all been built up to do. We go to White Sands Missile Range in New Mexico. Right now, we are, we have a rocket designed to break 50,000 feet in altitude, which is a little under 10 miles. And that picture of it there, it is going to be over 22 feet long from tip to tail whenever we have a nose cone on it. I guess some updates for the rocket. We finished our second pressure test last Friday, which we have to pressure test two times at 1,200 PSI to be able to fly because I guess if you don't have that 1,200 PSI, you can't fly. I don't know. That's the rules. We originally had eighth inch tubing on our eight inch, we had eighth inch tubing on an eight inch diameter body tube, but on previous pressure tests, we had an end cap blow off three different times, which at 800 PSI on an eight inch tube, that's like 60,000 pounds of force, and it it's violent. So we were having problems with local welder shops, so we took a trip down to Lake Jackson, which is southeast of Houston, and which is where Brazosport, who's another group that's building these rockets, had their stuff welded, and our take heads blew off again. So we came back here and we snatched a quarter inch wall from them, and we got our successful, our successful pressure test. What else? We are eight days out from supposedly supposed to have a completed rocket. We still need to do pressure tests on our fully assembled like valve system and stuff, and we have to pressure test our injector, which Hunter and I worked on the injector together, and we're having to figure that out. This rocket, like Mr. Mathis said, if something can go wrong, it will. And we, on our original calendar, we said we'd have a finished rocket by the end of April, and at the end of April, we didn't have half of our parts. So that was a kind of a shock, I guess. But, you know, I just, I want to say thank y'all for having this program. I'm going to UT next year, and I'm going to be studying aerospace engineering, and I don't think I would have near as much experience in this field if I would, if I didn't have this program. And I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Mathis for being a great teacher and probably the best that I've ever had. I'll let Hunter take it from here.
Thank you, Luke. I just want to start off my, talking about my experience by thanking Mr. Mathis because he is one of the best teachers I've ever had, and so I just want to go, go start off now. So I started off in the engineering program as a junior, so I did not start out as a freshman, which was very difficult because I have to take all those classes that a normal person who started as a freshman would have to take. So I had to double block my classes as a junior and quadruple block my classes as a senior in order to get my engineering endorsement. So with that, it has been a very stressful and fun year, two years, to get my endorsement. So as a junior, I had to take all of the freshman sophomore classes, and so those were AutoCAD and I-CAD. And those programs, like they have talked about, help you design parts and design drawings that are used for machining or building houses. And I just want to say thank y'all for allowing us to have that program, allow those two programs, because I can put those on a resume or even my college transcripts and our applications and say, look, I know how to use these programs. And that is a big stepping stone because those colleges use those programs, and it shows that I'm experienced in them. So thank y'all for that. And so, moving on to my senior year, which is this year, I had to take the junior class and the senior class together, and those are both rocket, both rocket classes. So I had a very fun senior year because I got to build two rockets. I spent my entire senior year working with Luke to design the injector for our rocket. And the injector for our rocket allows us to oxidize our liquid fuel so that it's more fiery, it catches on fire better, which is what we want. So I have with him designed the injector using AutoCAD and I-CAD. So whenever I was working with the junior class, I was looked at as the the knowledge guy because I was a part of the senior class, but in my head, not really. I'm still super, I was still super inexperienced and learning tons of new things. And so I learned a lot my junior year, or my senior year and the junior class, even though that I was a senior working on the senior rocket. I still had a lot to learn working on the smaller scaled rocket. So I learned a lot my senior year with the junior class, which is kind of surprising because I'm a senior, but, you know. So I'd like to thank y'all, like Luke said, for allowing us to have the program. And I want to thank Mr. Mathis for teaching us. Mr. Mathis's way of teaching is not like any other teacher. He will kind of guide you in the right direction, but you have to figure out all that information yourself. You have to go read books, ask people, call people to figure out what you need to know. And that's the most fun part about engineering is that experience of not knowing what it is, so you have to go find it, and you have to go, you know, seek it out. So thank y'all for allowing us to have the engineering program.
By the time my kids are seniors, they always refer to me as their teacher with air quotes. So there's that. I wanted to thank the maintenance department and fire department. So we used to test our, pressure test our rocket in what were fishery research tanks behind the vocational building, but when they did the greenhouse, they took those down understandably, and the kids were like, well, where are we going to test it? And, right, we just talked about that some of the tank heads blew off, and I knew I didn't want to test it in a pool in case it messed someone's pool up. And one of the kids said, why don't we just dig a hole? So I contacted maintenance. I said, can we dig a hole 22 feet long, three feet wide, and two feet deep? And within a day, I had a response, an answer of yes, let's get it done. And they found a spot, the kids lined it, and then the fire department came out and filled the hole with water. So thanks for making that happen on such a quick turnaround. Thanks to the finance department, business department, Jill Michael Pam, Steve and Penny over at the high school. We processed, they processed over 71 purchase orders for us this year. And in engineering, the kids are always on a we needed that yesterday mentality, and our district is phenomenal at being able to process and take care of business quickly. Like I've worked, I've done teacher training for this program all over the state and in New Mexico, and the efficiency of our district to be able to do this is top-notch. Like there is not another school that's able to do it better than us in terms of processing POs for teachers. So thank you. We also had an issue with Omega trying to return a part that took about three months to get processed, and they were great at handling Omega in that situation. Thanks to the community, Jay Malinckrott and Chris Easterwood at Heartland. We're able to get all of our parts done. I know there's, they are, all machine shops in this country are overloaded and overworked, but they made it happen. Luke and Sam Moran over at SRM Manufacturing were the ones doing our welding and finished our welding at the end of last week. BJ Millard owns Aqua Power Cutting. Both his sons went through the rocket program probably five and 10 years ago. Russell Straubey, he did the tip for the nose cone. We couldn't, and Mooney was going to help fiberglass our nose cone here at the end. We had an anonymous donor donate a $6,500 3D printer and enough materials for another $2,000. The quality of the printer is phenomenal, and the kids have really been able to do some incredible design work with that. In the future, I hope to collaborate with whoever is replacing Ms. Gonzalez at the middle school for computer science to try and create a more mentoring collaborative relationship between us so that the kids can see what they can do in high school and see what they can do later, too. So thanks to the board of trustees for the constant support over the last 24 years. I feel blessed to be in a district that does support that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Y'all continue to do great things and are such great ambassadors for our district. Next, we have the bond update. LAN.
Not so fast. Good evening. I'm Tim Strusley with LAN. We're your bond program manager for the 2022 bond, and I'd like to say good evening to Dr. Gonzalez and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening to give you an update on your bond program. First of all, start off with a pre-bond project, which is the extension to Post Oak Drive into your new middle school site. We went out with a competitive seal proposal type of construction contract advertisement, had a qualification-based selection for that, and Allen Keller Company was a successful contractor in that selection process. During negotiation, they approached us about possibly being able to make a reduction in their offer price by switching from a firm fixed price contract to a unit price contract with an estimated quantity, and that resulted in a 21% reduction in their original proposal. So overall, the revised net contract amount for them is going to be 352,682, along with the $15,000 we have built in for owner contingency. That brings it to a total contract amount of $367,682. In addition to that contract, we had a need to have material testing services for this driveway, and so we went out with a expedited qualification-based selection for professional services. We contacted three companies that had shown previous interest in doing work in the district. Out of those three, only one turned out to be responsive to the advertisement, and that was Terricon. And so Terricon was selected to perform the services, and the cost of their services is going to be $11,055. And the way a material testing contract works, it does come with a unit price schedule, so occasionally you might have a situation where you need extra tests done. And by having this unit price schedule built into their contract, we already have a negotiated price for those additional tests if we need them. So that's a good feature. Next, we are working on finalizing the architect agreement with Huckabee Architects. The contract is currently with your attorney for final review, and then hopefully we'll be able to move to get a signature on that contract. The district has also asked us to prepare a cash flow plan for your bond manager to use in developing a bond sales strategy, which you'll hear about shortly tonight. So that was provided to Assistant Superintendent Minshew. We are also currently working on a master schedule for your bond program, of which the biggest project, the middle school, is going to dominate that. We know your objective is to open that school in August of 2024, so we're basically planning for that and backing up from that date to figure out when to get to the bid box, which will probably be late in the last quarter of this year so we can get an award early in 2023, so we can get the doors open on your new school in August of 2024. And finally, as part of the bond program, we are furnishing an online project management platform software for your district to use, which we're going to use to track all design documentation. We're able to handle the procurement process through it using an online bid room, plans room. We've already done it with the Post Oak Drive extension and the material testing contracts, so those both went very well. And so we will continue to use that as a procurement platform in conjunction with your procurement manager. And we've also trained Dr. Williams and Assistant Superintendent Minshew on the software, so they'll be able to access it with us, and they can look up documentation as they need to. The software also tracks your budget. We'll be keeping a set of books, if you will, in parallel with Assistant Superintendent Minshew, so we'll be able to true up those two sets of records. Obviously, her records are the official records, but we keep track of them, too, so we can have a comparison and make sure we're all on the same page with your finances for the bond. And currently, we are loading up project budgets into that software for all of the projects, and we'll have that done shortly. So with that, I'll open it up if there are any questions.
Do you guys have any questions?
When do you think realistically the Post Oak would start and complete?
It, if we get a signed contract hopefully this week, I think it would start up by the beginning of July. I think they can mobilize.
Did it get all the permits, the text op permit?
Still waiting on the text, waiting on the text op permit. We have all the final, all the final paperwork in. We have everything to them. We're just waiting on the signature. It's happening exactly like y'all predicted. I actually think they hold it like a deck of cards and say, I think I'll put this one today, or this one, so. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the update on the bond sale progress.
Good evening. Just a quick presentation for you on our issuance schedule here. You can go to the next page. So the plans to proceed with the issuance of the first installment of bonds authorized by the voters on May 7th. Goal is to approve a plan to proceed with issuance tonight, market price bonds the week of July 11th. District to receive the funds on approximately August 11th, and we've got a timeline on the next page for you. Important dates are highlighted in yellow, that pricing date, the closing date, and the board meeting to approve the sale officially. The next page. So considerations for the issuance of the authorized bonds. We've developed two scenarios to issue the bonds in order to match the projected cash flows for the projects that LAN has been working on with Jill. Issuing two installments as originally planned, issue it all at once, and the goal is to maintain a stable INS tax rate in either one of those scenarios, and as of now, we are able to do that. So the first scenario is two sales. Working from left to right here, you can see you've got your currently outstanding debt service requirements, and that next box is the sale that would occur this summer at 54 million in principal. The next box is the Series 2024 to be sold two years from now at 28 million, the grand total of that whole issuance process and the impacts later on. You can see in the green that where we are now with the assumptions on the assessed values that we still have a debt service fund surplus every year. Second scenario is the one sale, and you can see, same same setup, and you can see that we still are able to maintain the tax rate where it is. There should be, there should be no increase and maybe, maybe decrease, but, and still see that surplus there. So in summary, issuing the bonds in two installments would cost the district less in interest costs and less rates are to rise about 85 to 100, 100 basis points is kind of where we're seeing the break even analysis at throughout the yield, throughout the yield curve over the next year. Having two issuances would create a larger total cost of issuance just because if you do it twice, there's attorney general fees, there's just hard costs that are associated with each sale if you do it separately. And that prices roughly 50,000 to 60,000 more. And the last page is just kind of the interest rate market, the municipal interest rate market since January of 2020 to present. And you can see it's been a little crazy, but that's it, and I'm happy to answer some questions.
So I do have a question. If we do see the interest rates going up in that 85 to 100 basis points, there's nothing that says we have to wait the two years to go ahead and do the second issuance if we felt like we were kind of at that break even point and we thought the rates were probable to continue going up. Is that fair?
No, you wouldn't have to wait. That's something we can work on with the cash flow projections and what the district needs and how much and when. And with Jill, we can, we can definitely shorten that timeline.
A couple, I mean, this is, we're in a market that's different than we've ever done this before, so. Normally, we're trying not to call a, you know, issue a bond so quickly because we don't need that much money right now, but we need it. And this is kind of like opposite because we're fighting what we think is accurate information regarding interest rates. But we can, we can go ahead and do one, and we can afford the payments. That's what that page is reflecting. I understand. But in this page, what it's also not reflecting is a future call like in three or four or five years, not a call, another set of bonds in four years, five years. So that's why there's showing a surplus.
Right. Yeah, that's just what we have today to work with today.
Understand.
And so this shows the INS rate going down from 10.6 to an even 10 cents. And so if we were to have it at 10.6, we would have even greater surplus, which would give us more to work with in the future, whereas right now, we're trying to be mindful of the community and how much taxes have gone up, and so we're essentially trying to save off.
Yes, that is showing the 10 cents, and it works there. So the 10.6, it creates a larger surplus.
Is the number off to the right, the 24 is what we could pay off in years, or is that a, just a page, that's a page number?
A page number.
Catch me if you're not my question.
Nice teamwork.
Now I see it, but on my, at my home computer, I thought, oh, it's over in 24.
30-year AM, right?
This is, this, that is, that's what we presented when we brought this to the, to the board before the election. We've been looking at a 30-year schedule, and we're happy to look at. And we're happy to look at different options, but that's what we have right now.
And so you have a 4.25% interest rate on the first issuance and a 4.75 on the second issuance?
Correct, and those are hopefully conservative. Obviously, the market, we don't know. But we try to be very conservative with that estimation.
If we did call one, and we went down the road a year or so and interest rates came down, would it be a problem to refinance that like we've done in the past?
This series? So, I mean, 10-year calls are generally the norm.
Okay.
So you wouldn't, we can, the market does allow some eight and nine-year options. So you'd have to probably wait at least that long to call these bonds. But you have other bonds in the process that we can call along the way.
Yeah, but they're all low interest.
They're lower interest rates. We want to call these.
Yeah, that's true.
So typically, the call rate on these is eight to 10 years?
Yeah.
But it's fixed for the term? It's just callable?
Correct. So you could use it to restructure or hopefully there'd be savings in the future and stuff like that.
And most of them would allow us to call, I mean, it's eight to 10 years, but we can apply, we can pay ahead like we've done before and pay down quicker.
Correct, you can do defusances to help manage your tax rate or just pay off debt early.
Which way do you think we should go, Jill?
I don't know. It's so tough. We don't need all 82 million right now, but it's so, it's a little scary with the market and what it could do.
Can we get any interest out of it, being in a protected fund?
You can, but I don't know at what point we may have issues. I don't know, I don't know the rules very well on arbitrage rebate.
We'd have to look at it and see where it, I think you'd be okay. You could do it.
Because I haven't, I haven't had to deal with arbitrage rebate in a while.
We can, we can look at that and get an answer for you.
Again, in the past, we've never had to deal with that.
Right, right.
Great, so did your break even rate include us reinvesting the excess funds for 18 months?
No, it's just a simple.
It was just a simple mathematic. So that it really, the break even rate then, actually, when you say that, is probably lower than 85 basis points because it's not taking into account?
Interest earnings?
Interest earnings.
Yes, we just, we don't know what the plan is with that. So we don't, it's hard to calculate that, so we don't know what that earning is until we kind of get there. But we can try to put a run together to try to estimate that.
So there's really, as long as the second call was at least what we would pay now or higher, then it only makes sense to go ahead and go now with all of it. There's no reason to wait and do a second, a second issuance. The only reason we would do that is if we really thought the interest rates were going to go down.
Right.
Yes, that is a way to look at it for sure.
What's going to happen?
Yes, that's what's going to happen. I think you'd go for all of it right now.
I'm not normally that way, but I am now. The way that Eileen is doing it at once, just because of the market environment.
I'm sure you can find something good and safe to put 28 million into, Jill. I'm sure. A lot of money.
But the reality is, we can't, I mean, we won't spend 54 million for at least two years. I mean, it's going to have to be under heavy construction before, that's our money. That's, I mean, that's the bulk of the expense. All of the little stuff doesn't add up to very many dollars. And so it's just, it's just as strange because we've never done this.
So are we, help me understand, for the second issuance, are we, is it absolutely in 24? Or could it even be pushed back beyond that if construction gets slowed or anything like that? Because they're saying we're going to see a downtick. If we hit into recession, then we're going to also see rates start to drop again. So it's going to go boom, 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 boom.
Right.
And then, and we can't predict. But I also want to consider if we'd have lags due to DOT or construction. Could this be a 25, 26 thing?
We can, we can change, we can move the schedule around.
Yeah.
If the district's needs.
You should pick up the mic.
We can adjust the schedule, sorry, to meet the district's needs as, as they come.
So if we haven't spent the money or based on what we can see at the time around rates, you have an ability to call at that time or, I mean, to request at that time?
Yeah, so you have the authorization for the, for the bonds. It's, it's on, it's y'all's schedule now when y'all would like to issue them.
Is there any additional cost to issue a shorter term bond? And I'm just looking at the differential between the five-year and the 30 and maybe put $10 million in a short term, which is the, the shorter term expenses, the design, the buses, the servers, and then?
So how we've handled that lately is we, we kind of break it out inside the bigger issuance. And we can tell you, like, sorry. In both of those scenarios, there's two to almost 3 million in principal payment in the first year alone.
Okay.
So we can, we can break that out and say this payment paid for computers or buses or, and show that so that you have record that.
Yeah, we're not paying.
You're not paying 30 years on a laptop.
So it's already the weighted average is what you have presented?
What's the recommendation?
I don't know. I mean, there's, I mean, there's pros and cons to both, both options. I don't think we can actually go wrong with either option though either. I mean, I think doing it in a one sale will earn interest. We know, we're, we're safe. We know what we got. Doing two allows us to choose when we do it and make sure, you know, because it could do something totally different. We may need the money quicker. We may need the money later. So doing it in two issuances allows us to, to do that and not have to hold all of that money for a extended period of time when we don't need that money. And it, it appears if I looked at it right, we actually pay it off a year sooner in the second scenario, or the, the scenario where we do two sales. Am I, did I make that up? Or maybe we just pay less because we have one done? No, we, we pay, yeah, we, we finish a year sooner. In the, because we end in 2052 with one issuance. And we end in 2051 with the two issuances at this, with this scenario.
Which one would give the boards in five years or 10 years the best?
Well, that's a great question.
Which one gives a future board the?
Because we want it, we were, we were looking at potentially in six years doing another. So one, two, three. It was the 2027 year. And then the two issuances, we have about 135 and go up. So you have more that first year with the one issuance. I don't know if, but is it more the whole time or is it in 2031? Yeah, we'll have to, that might be a really good thing for y'all to run the scenario of how, like, what, what could we actually do in 2027 if we called another bond? What scenario gives us a better ability to do that? It looks like both scenarios give us the ability. I don't know if there's one that might be a better scenario or not to give those such a ways.
It's all relevant on the second call's rate.
True.
Yeah.
True.
We don't have that crystal ball.
That's true.
But you're saying at 4.5, and your scenarios are showing at about 3.5. You're just thinking that maybe by August or July it would be at 4.5? You know?
Well, like for the, for this year, we're hoping that, you know. We're hoping that four and a quarter was conservative, and we come in well below that. Today saw a pretty big jump in the rates. And then if you priced it today, you'd be in about, been about 4% or a little under. But it could, you know, it's doing this all the time.
Dr. Joe, is there a recommended motion? Do we pick, do we pick one?
We don't have to take actual action today.
This is, this is just, there's no real action tonight.
We don't have to take action.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for the information. Next, we have consideration and approval of consent agenda items A through P.
Two and a half years.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through P.
Thank you, Kelly.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Moving into new business, consideration and approval of the reorganization of the school board.
I would, I mean, Natalie, I don't know, none of us have had time to talk about it, but you've done a great job with the transition. You and Joe work well together. I would, I mean, if you'd stay, that'd be my recommendation. I mean, I'm up for anybody, but you've done, you and Joe have done a great job together.
I mean, I fully support that. Natalie has the bandwidth. I mean, I think there's a great synergy going there. We're organized. We're appreciative of you keeping us straight. It is, it's easy.
Speaks well.
I would, Matt, I would challenge you to consider taking on the secretary role. I know I did it my first year, and I felt like it was a, a good thing because you learn a lot about how to document the closed meeting sessions. And so my recommend, no offense Judge, but my recommendation would be to let Matt try that out as a first year because it just helps with the whole learning curve of things.
I'm sure Judge will move for that quickly.
You have to tell them good times.
Whatever you guys want to do, whatever we need to do, let's go, I'm good with.
I think it's, it's a rite of passage for a new board member to come in and be a secretary.
Then who am I to stop that? It's fine. I don't mind.
And Mark, you will continue as?
If you have a question, I'd be happy to.
So I make a motion that we keep Natalie as the president, Mark as the vice president, and Matt Seinberger as the secretary.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Corinne. Thank you, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you for your support for all of us. We can't do it by ourselves. We have to do it as a team. So it's easy to work with a good team. Next, we have consideration and approval of board policy, EIC. Robin?
Yes. Okay, so I know that you guys got a board update and had a couple of questions. So the, the first proposal for change on page one is to move from a three-tiered system and from 105-point scale to a two-tiered system with a 100-point scale. So that the highest grade that a student would receive would be 100. One of the issues that arises with that is if a student is in a regular class and the teacher gives them a score of over 100, then they could end up in a better spot than a student who's in a more rigorous AP or honors class. And so Region 13 has said that no other district, you know, does a grading scale over 100. So they agreed that it, and with our, I ran this through Tasby and with Sarah Leone, and they all agreed that that would be, that that would make our, the tiered system and the 100-point would make ours, make it more equitable. And then the question about the half point, we've been kind of discussing. It, even though it says beginning of the year 2022, it's actually been in practice since 2016. So we had talked with both lost, both of the lawyers about going ahead and just like eliminating that for next year. But they said you can't really do that midstream because some of our sophomores, juniors, and seniors are eligible to take those tests. And when they entered in, they were, that was the practice that was there. And so it's not a good practice to, to take that out midstream. And so both of the lawyers agreed that it would be best to start with class of 2025. That would be equitable because, and they give plenty of time for the students that are going to come through to understand that the half point would go away. The half point has been the biggest contention since I've been on the job. I remember when I first got hired in July of 2020. It took, Region 13 couldn't even calculate. It was very difficult because ITEX didn't support it. Skyward cannot either. If a student takes an exam that they haven't been in a class, that half point has to go somewhere. And so there, there, there's, you know, if you don't have a class to tag that half point, it's really not, it's, it's really not a, a system that makes any sense. So that, that is the second change is the half point. The third, the third change that is recommended is that we just add in a third tying point for our valedictorian and salutatorian if we ever got to that point, because sometimes it's very, very close for, for the two people. And it just adds that they have, have completed the foundation program. And I, I kind of explained a little bit about that in the board update as well. That, that prevents some, a student that hasn't, that isn't on the distinguished level from becoming the valedictorian or salutatorian. And then for, oh, I'm sorry, I said that before the breaking the ties. And then the breaking the ties, all of these methods for the breaking of the tie, it would just be that it counts their tier one courses, which is that all their honors courses that they've been in. And then that their calculated GPA weight using only the eligible grades in tier one. So it would, it would just look at those classes for them. And then if the tie is not broken after applying these methods, the district shall recognize all students involved in the tie as sharing the honor and title. And so I want to compliment the high school admin team and the counselors because they've been, been working with me on this pretty much all year. And Sarah Leone coming in at the end after we worked with Tasby and really helping guide, because this is one of the most important board policies that you can have because it, it really affects our students and how they are, how they're ranked, which affects them going into college and getting scholarships. So do you have any additional questions other than from the board update or from the question that I answered for you, Mr. Corinne?
So in summary, this is a whole lot more clear. Because I've never understood the old system.
Yes, and I, I will, I mean, I've worked in six different districts and I've, and, and I've also had this discussion with Dr. Rodriguez as well. We have never seen anything like this. Over 105 is, I mean, how can you be better than perfect? And so that, and then the tier three is really not good practice, so.
So this will kind of align us, and I'm looking at the high school principal just to make sure. This will align us with what's normal with high schools.
Absolutely.
And to be more manageable, more predictable. Fair, and still fair.
And we, and Dr. Rodriguez asked, you know, for us to get a list to our education foundation too to provide some opportunities to help with some of the pricing of the courses that, in the tier one for the students. So that is something that's also being looked at.
Can you speak to how AP is compared to on-ramps, is compared to dual credit as it relates to the tiers? Are those considered to be the same?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't support that because they are not academically, from somebody who's lived it, the same rigor at all. And so that's something, just to put out there, it are not the same rigor at all. Just, that's something for all you guys to know, that tier one, those classes are not the same. So a dual credit class compared to an AP class to an on-ramps class, when you have your child take it, they are fundamentally different in difficulty. So for awareness, I think that's something as we consider this policy, we need to consider going forward.
But how would you differentiate? I'm just asking, because there's also non-AP classes. I know the anatomy class is a straight up class, probably the most difficult class in high school. And so it's not a weighted, it was a previously weighted class. And so I don't know if you can actually differentiate which one's the hardest.
And I don't know either. I guess my question really is, how do we consider that? Engineering's the same way. That's not, engineering's counted like an athletics class, but it's, it's, it's much harder. So I mean, I know it's a tough question to ask, but it is something for us to consider. You could have two kids going up in the top 10, and one took all dual credit and one took. and one took all dual credit and one took all AP and that dual credit kid's going to be higher ranked than the kid who took AP now. So we just have to swallow that pill as a district and I'm, I'm not in it one way or another, but as a district, we have to understand that that would put our kids at different positions. And they are, they, and they're, they could be fundamentally different kids. Do you know how other districts handle that?
All, all the other districts that I know of, they consider them all in tier one because it's above and beyond what regular tier, tier two classes
Would be?
Would, yeah, because of the course load and the rigor.
But they're not adding like a, the senior engineering class or the anatomy class is a tier one class because it's not a college credit?
I guess what we could do is as their next person comes in, we can take a look at what we consider tier one classes and they can take a look at that. Absolutely, and like a review.
Yeah, I love the simplicity of this and I, I really do because it is super confusing. I think really all I want to do is just double check when we compare ourselves to what Region thirteen and the state, that we're doing apples to apples for tier one. I just, I think that's really a good quality check to do as we look at our classes, but I love where this is headed, so please understand that. I just, those are very different classes.
Mrs. Derrington, if we were to postpone this and, and take a review, what is the latest date that we have to go ahead and get this approved?
I would say you would probably want to get it done this summer because your student handbooks go out in August and so you'd want to have it solidified before the student handbooks go out because that could be the section of the student handbook that could be corrected as long as it's out before, you know, August when you have students come back and that, and you approve your student handbooks in the August, I believe in the August board meeting, so as long as you have it in place before, then that would be acceptable.
Okay, because considering the information that you brought up, I think it's, it's worth our time to go ahead and, and just do a review.
Do you have time? So do we have to come to our July?
Well, we do have an opportunity June twenty seventh. We have a board meeting and then we have another one in July. So we do have two board meetings that we can consider. We can start working on this quickly and do the research, Mrs. DeCuffin, and we'll bring it back.
I like, I like where it is. I like the simplicity, but if there is a tweak, if it's fair, if it is a fair tweak.
Yep, so, so that's just up to y'all if you want to table it or if you want to vote on it. That's, that's totally up to you guys and if you want me to look into the tier one, I can absolutely do that.
I, I thank you guys for hearing me on that. I want to make sure, you know, our graduates, when we compare ourselves to other schools, we understand what we're gut getting and when they compare themselves to each other. And the other thing I'd say is this is super important that parents coming in, especially for the class, the kid, first kids that will get this, that this is part of the counseling conversation around which classes they choose because every kid, you may say, well, you want to take a pre-AP English class because you know you'll do well in it and you want to compare it to a regular class. It is a conversation you need to be having with your children on where their strengths are. And so I would really encourage as we have the counseling conversation, this be taken beyond just a policy that's handed out. It's a conversation now that we've made it simpler to have with parents.
Absolutely, I agree completely.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have, do we have a motion to table?
I'll move to table it.
Thank you, Matt.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor? So we will table and do some more research. Thank you, Kelly. Consideration and approval of the Casa Uber Alas MOU.
So I believe in the signature folder is the MOU for the Casa Uber Alas agreement for the 2022-2023 school year. It has been signed by all other designees, so it just, it just needs to be signed by the board president and by another board member.
This is very similar to the one we had last year?
Yes, sir. Just updated some new members on it.
Oh, you already signed it. We have to vote on it?
I motion we approve as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Corinne. Thank you, Judge. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero and it is signed. Consideration and approval of waste collection agreement.
So this is just a renewal to our current service. It's a three-year agreement on our PACE co-op contract, but the reason we're bringing it to you tonight is because it is over fifty thousand dollars. Otherwise, we would just move forward, but there's nothing really fancy or special to say on it.
Same as before. And we've had, they've had good service for us?
We've had good ser, I, I, I mean, Michelle may bill us become that more, but.
They've been excellent and if, and if we get a phone call like on, at two o'clock on a Friday afternoon that there's a bad smell coming from a dumpster and we need to empty it before a football game, they are spot on to come out and do any, or, you know, somebody decides to clean things out at Stonewall and we've got a whole bunch of, of stuff out there, then, you know, they're real quick to, to handle it for us, so they've been, they've been top notch, so I didn't have a problem and we wanted to renew.
I move we approve as presented.
Thank you, Corinne.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor? Motion passes seven zero. Consideration and approval of the 2022-23 compensation plan.
Okay, so you guys should have something in front of you guys and basically I will, I will say the, the key points. So on the teacher pay scale, it begins this next year at forty-eight thousand dollars with steps on the hiring scale from step zero all the way to thirty. All continuing teachers will receive at least a forty-two hundred dollar pay increase, which equates to a seven point seven percent market median raise. And those teachers that are in steps one through ten will receive a slightly additional pay increase to factor in some market adjustments, so between forty-two hundred to forty-five hundred for those staff. I also have, or what I'm recommending to you guys tonight is a four percent midpoint general pay increase for all eligible staff within the three pay plans that have a midpoint, so that's the administrative, professional, clerical, and auxiliary. We have bus drivers at twenty-five dollars and fifty cents an hour and bus monitors at fifteen thirty-five an hour. If you are on a pay scale that you're already above, you would not be lowered based on the new rates, but, and you would still receive a midpoint raise. And then there are a few equity market adjustments if there is somebody whose current salary is below the new recommended minimum or who have been identified as being lower than the market based on their experience. These, these that I just said are included in what we have planned right now in our 2022-2023 budget and so I have the recommended actions. The last item, of course, is to increase our district health insurance contribution to a total of two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month, which is a fifty dollar increase. Are there any other, any questions or concerns or anything?
Yeah, I'm super excited about this. I think this is awesome for the whole staff and teachers, so thank you.
Jill, you've done, you and staff have done a great job. I just say to all of us and the rest of y'all, I mean, we've got to keep looking year over year. I appreciate what everybody's done, but I still don't think we're where we need to be, end of story, and so I think we're all going to have to work hard and be diligent.
Yes, we have to keep, we have to keep working at it, absolutely.
Hold on, I don't have any further questions. You wanted to comment again?
I had one, well, and it can be after the motion, but so after we do this, do, how hard is it to get an update mid-year so that we can compare where we are with others? Because I know we're all in dynamic motion.
With like, with what other districts have done? I think it's in, and Stacy, you might be able to tell me, but is it in January? When do, when does Tasby normally give update? I mean, it's, you can always look on everybody else's website, but it's a whole lot easier when you can click on Tasby's report.
They normally provide that information early spring and in the fall, they request that data from the districts and then once they compile all the information, they normally release their report sometime after the new year to spring break, so somewhere is in that area.
Yeah, somewhere between January and March. I can't remember which month they typically send that out, but at that point, we definitely can't. Now, again, in our area, like our real narrow area, we can look pretty quickly.
And did we figure out what component that we needed to put in the salary adjustment to, for the attendance part of things?
I will have something, I'll have that on June twenty seventh. I'll, as part of our actually adopting the budget, I'll have basically an if-then statement that you guys can also approve at that time. That'll be, yeah, it'll be a separate time. We want to get this approved tonight just so that way as we're working towards hiring people, we can actually give them real data instead of a, well, we think we're gonna, in a little bit, we might tell you. This will give us a little bit more ability to say something real and legitimate.
It's very, very exciting and, and I want to say again, we were committed as a board to raising teachers' salaries and all staff across the board and, and I think we've done the best I've ever seen since I've been associated with the district, so it's very, very exciting because they're not only getting the pay raise, but the increase in health insurance and contribution and the decrease in the price of health insurance, so it's going to ripple out even more, so thank, thank you. I hope you feel the appreciation that we feel for all of you.
I do want to say that over a year ago, when I interviewed for, for this position, the board tasked me with a few things and one of them was the bond and I recall you all wanting some reassurances that the bond was going to pass, so check. One of the other items was there was a high level of concern that the board had with salaries and wages and since the very beginning, the board has been committed to ensuring that all the employees that are sacrificed day in and day, day out, that they are compensated appropriately. But this has not been easy. It has been extremely difficult and there are many people that need to be thanked and I want to use this opportunity to say that we have some campus administrators that really had an intense focus on their budgets this year on budget planning. We have some department administrators that also had, they, they, their time was consumed with looking at their budgets. We've, we've created some formulas for our campuses that we feel are going to benefit our employees. It's very important that the community understands that we're not cutting the budget. This has always been a focus on reallocating funds that are not being utilized and putting them in the back in the pockets of our employees. In addition, we've, Jill and her team and the focus that they've had has been intense. Not only do we have the bond that we had to work, that we had to commit to, but in the spring, it's budget season. This just does not happen by chance, so I want to also thank Jill for all her hard work. You know, early on in September, we had a conversation and I said, Jill, one point five million. We are going to find one point five million dollars and we're going to put it back in the pockets of the employees.
I told him he was crazy.
Yeah, she said I was crazy and I said, well, there's a strategy to all of this and I think two weeks ago, I asked her, how much are we committing back to our employees? And she said, one point three seven five and I said, wow, I failed. I failed getting the one point five, but so I want to let everybody know that earlier today, I asked her, I said, are we still at one point three seven five or are we at one point five? And she's like, no, we're pretty much at one point five million, so we made the mark, but it took a lot of hard work. And Mrs. Bowman, I know you said that, as far as you can recall, that this is the highest package. I did call Dr. Mark and I called him earlier today and I said, Dr. Mark, can you please tell me what the highest percentage that you recall? And he's like, oh, roughly about three, four, maybe five at one point in time for teachers. And I told him, I said, well, we're doing a seven point seven percent increase for our teachers and four percent across the board and he was really excited and he said, Joe, he's like, I believe that that's probably the largest increase that we've, that we've ever given our employees at one time, so I just want to say that the focus has truly been to put money back in the pockets of our employees. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Laney, because we don't just stop here. It's year after year, we have to do our job and our due diligence and continue to find, you know, where some of these funds are at so we can go ahead and put money back for our employees because at the end of the day, that is where education occurs. It's with, in our classrooms, it's in our, inside the halls, even our bus drivers, it's bus routes, it's in the cafeteria, it's nonstop. We are an educational institution and we need to make sure that we're compensating, that we're compensating our employees, so. And I think it's important that from the very beginning, this was the board member's goal. This board had that goal and you all were extremely committed. The conversations we've had the past month at the workshops, that has been what has guided us to get to this one point five million that we're putting back into the pockets of our employees, so I want to publicly thank the administrators, Jill, but I also, I think it's very important that we, that I publicly thank the board because this would not be possible if it wasn't for your support and your guidance and not, I'm not going to say the resistance, but the questioning that we are given and I think that is, it's a team effort, so I want to thank the board and everyone else. Thank you very much and I also hope that the employees see there was a lot of hard work that was put into this and we, we, we remain committed to ensuring that they're compensated appropriately.
Can we do it in one motion?
We can.
So I motion that we approve as presented the new compensation skill.
I'll second.
Thank you, Corinne, and thank you, Matt. All those in favor? We definitely approve, seven zero. Next, we have the 2022-23 budget update.
And I really don't have anything to, to say on that tonight. It was really just a placeholder in case there is something needed, but really the compensation was the biggest piece of that. There will be in the newspaper on Wednesday our annual notice to the, to the public that we will be adopting our budget at the end of this month, so that will be in the Wednesday's paper. They don't know what maybe yet, but it will be in the Wednesday's paper and then we will adopt it at the end of the month on the twenty-seventh, so.
Thank you. Next, we go to the superintendent's report.
This is a great segue because we're going to talk about where we ended up with attendance and with enrollment and you know, those are two huge contributing factors to having a very healthy budget. So if you want more money, we need more students and we need to have some great attendance. So the positive is when it comes to the end of the year numbers, we were up in 2022, we were ninety-one students above where we were at back in May of 2021, so we ended the year at three thousand one hundred and one students. And every single campus saw an increase in the number of students that they had this year. When it comes to attendance, as a district, we ended great with attendance. We were up two point four nine percentage points compared to last year at this time, May of last year. We did have some campuses that saw some increases, some that saw some decreases, but that is going to be a focus that we're going to have beginning August of 2022. We don't anticipate that we're going to continue seeing the gifts that we've been receiving from the state when it comes to attendance. We've been receiving, you know, some, some flexibility from the state, but everything, all the information that we received is pointing towards, the expectation is the good old fashioned way, students need to be in school, they need to be in their classroom, and they're going to count for attendance, so that's going to be a focus for us as a district administration and as a campus administration and we're going to ensure that we have as many students as we can in our schools and that we have as many students as we can in our classrooms, so. That's where we're at for the end of the year.
Okay, next is board business and if you'll take a look on, on your place, you have a revised school board regular meeting dates calendar?
Yes, so I do want to share with the board, as we were working through the calendar, the board meeting calendar for next year, the fall, it was extremely easy to have board meetings. the fall, it was extremely easy to have a board meeting scheduled for the second Monday of every month. Where we ran into some issues was in the spring. We have some student holidays. We have some workdays that are impacting the second Monday. So, we made some adjustments. And we just wanted to share with the board what those adjustments were, and to hear if there's any feedback, any information that you think that we should consider before we approve those dates. Some of the highlights that we considered is, spring is very heavy with sports. There's a lot of activities that we have to consider as well, as well as the different workdays and holidays that are going to be impacting. So, what you will find is, in January, February, March, April, and in May, oh, no, I'm sorry, just the first four months, there's some flexibility that we need. And we're moving the board meeting date. Instead of having it on that second Monday, we're moving it up the Monday before. To stay consistent with Mondays.
It's just the first, it's just February, March, April?
I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct about that. You're correct. February, March, and April. So, it's three months that's going to be out of cycle.
I have a question. Historically, we've had a board meeting during STAR. And it's, I just, every time I look out and I look at the teachers and administrators, they all look tired during STAR. If we're looking at being flexible, should we even consider looking at the May date and getting it out of the STAR window? I don't know. That might be something you to go take back to the teachers and administrators. But it's, but they've got their own kids. They're trying to get to bed early. They're trying to make sure they're successful with the STAR test. It's just something that year over year comes up.
Certainly, we can, we can go ahead and make that adjustment if the board agrees.
Does that hurt going that late in the night? Since the 15th? I mean, we're... We're not really having a budget meeting, are we? Not really?
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
And, and Joe, that may be a question you want to ask your principals, if that's even something, that's, that's just my perception. It may not be reality.
Okay. We can bring this back as an item on the June 27th meeting.
I think part of this is don't have an agenda topic on that meeting that would conflict with people.
Well, and Kelly's point, I mean, we need our administrators and all that. I mean, it's, thank you for bringing it up. That's right on.
And it'd be nice to also look at the schedule, so we don't conflict like we did this year with the awards program on the same night. So, maybe we can figure that out as well.
I think Wyreck's saying we're good there.
Okay, moving into department updates, business office.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Teaching and learning.
I just want to say that I'm really excited that we have 326 students enrolled in our summer school, because it's, it has not been very, we haven't had a lot of students in the last few years. So, I'm really proud of that. And that's a testament to all of those administrators sitting out there that got all those kids into summer school. And I wanted to say thank you. And thank you also for allowing me to serve the district for the last two years. And I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. Human resources.
Okay. So, good evening. I've been helping principals and hiring administrators with, just ensuring that the people that they're recommending for hire are properly certified or have the correct certification for the field. And so, we've been working on that. And if we find something interesting, we definitely research it. So, it's always fun, something different every time. And the HR department has been working actively and setting up Smart Find Express, which is with the other piece of Power School, which will be the second piece that will be implemented here soon in the June, July, August timeframe, once everything is finally complete. And this is where people will enter their absences. Frontline will, will be gone, and we will be 100% Power School. And so, Jennifer and Sabrina have been working very hard. So, I'm very thankful for all of their hard work and everything that they've done to get where we are now. I'm still assisting with any questions that are coming through. And is there any questions that you may have? I have sent some board updates, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
How many positions are we looking at right now?
So, at the primary school, we have about four teacher positions that are open and three aides. At the elementary school, we have some aide positions and about four teacher positions. At the middle school, we have two assistant principal positions, a secretary position to the principal, an LVN position, and a couple teacher positions, about four are left. At the high school, we still have about eight teacher positions left. There is one counselor, one receptionist, and an aide. And some of these are getting filled. And there has been some, some people who've been interested. And there's also unfortunately been some people who have recently turned down the job because they accepted a position with another district. So, just being honest, we did have some positions potentially filled. And some people, of course, they have choice. And so, they accepted a jobs elsewhere. But the, the principals are all working extremely hard. And I'm doing everything I can to help them find the best staff that they can for their campus.
Hopefully, the pay raise will be a good incentive to come to Fredericksburg.
I think that's going to be a great benefit for the district. And it's definitely going to help, help us compete and really snatch those people. So, it's going to be very helpful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Operations.
Good evening. Just to tag on to what LAN reported a while ago, I know I've said this to you guys before. But just to reiterate with regards to the bond and the things that we want to try to go ahead and move forward with, safety and security being number one, that we have been looking at and, and analyzing across the district and what we can accomplish this summer, even pre-bond sale. We have been looking at, at that and, and working on that. And then, figuring out which kind of, which projects we want to start first. So, that's some of the things that they're looking at in their timeline. Again, safety and security. And then, the inclusive playgrounds were the things that we wanted to really try to tackle in the beginning of our bond projects. And so, those are the things that LAN and, um, all of us have been looking at every week as we talk about what do we want to do going forward. Simultaneously, you know, the buses and all of that kind of stuff are going on. And we're looking at, at that type of thing. And any technology upgrades. And a lot of those technology upgrades have to do with the safety and security aspect, because our access control is technology-driven, as are our cameras and things like that. We are looking at the placement of cameras. I spoke with Jeff Stiles. He's in charge of our, our camera placement. I spoke with him right before this board meeting. And we were talking about specific cameras, exterior and interior, that, you know, we might have duplicated views or something like that, where we can relocate some cameras and really taking a look at that stuff. So, that, that is our, that is kind of our focus going forward with some of the things that LAN spoke about. Certainly, we've always been, I know since I've been here, because my first task was to put up the access control and the, and the cameras, and be deemed that woman who wasn't from here, because I was instilling all of the safety stuff. But I think as time has worn on, people have seen that they are very beneficial. The cameras are very beneficial. Our access control is super beneficial. And, and I think people are seeing that. And unfortunately, things like what happened in Uvalde happened. And it kind of brings light to the fact that in communities that you don't think things are going to happen, they do. And so, we would think, we'd hope and pray that nothing would ever happen in Fredericksburg. But it's, it's imperative that we're proactive in beefing up some of these things, like fences and things like that, so that we can put ourselves in a good place to protect our students and teachers. So, um, so we've looked through a lens. Dr. Joe and I went around the district and kind of looked at some different things in the district. And I know that we've reported that to you. But I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we are looking at all of that, making sure that gates close, gates lock, we have signage up, we have all of those types of things. And then, our custodial positions, I think that we got two more of our positions filled today. So, that's going to be really good in helping with our, overextending our custodial staff. So, super excited about getting those people in there. And everybody's just working really hard on grounds and repairs and all the things that we do in the summertime. So, that's about it for operations. So, if y'all have any questions about anything that I've reported to you, I know I missed a board update last week because we were working over at the high school and working in the exterior of the high school. And I missed it. So, if you have any questions on anything, just let me know.
Thank you for all that y'all are doing to get things ready for August. Okay, if no one has anything else, we'll move into executive session. If during the course of the meeting, discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in a meeting, the board will conduct a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapters D and E. Thank you all for attending tonight. And we will take a five-minute break.